Good evening, Councilwoman Campbell. Mrs. Adams. I've been coming to city council meetings for 13 years. I take notes in a little notebook. I write down what I have said on the microphone and other issues raised by the public. Sometimes in subsequent meetings, I'll ask for follow-up on what I have noted from the council. But most of the time, the notes don't do me or anyone else any good because they don't provide any resolution or closure. There's a feeling when one speaks at the mic that there's a glass wall in front of the council. And just in front of that wall, there is a black hole. I hope that imagery helps to explain the frustration of so many of us who truly care about the future of Asbury Park. We offer suggestions, concerns, ideas, and help, but most often, we are met with silence, blank stares, or no response. I know the two or three of you who have stood at this mic should agree with this assessment. There is no sense of closure on the issues brought by the public and other matters brought up by the council. It is very frustrating. It makes one want to throw up their hands and say, "Why bother?" But we continue to bother. We continue to bring new ideas and repeat old ones that have gone into that black hole. The official city council meeting minutes are not posted, so we don't know if they include the public portion of the meeting, or even if they include the matters to be brought up by the council, the city manager, or the city attorney. But I've been told that they do not. So all this effort is lost, and there is no follow-up. I would like to change this. With as much respect as I can, I'm going to continue keeping my notes of the city council meetings, but bigger and more public. This is my notepad. [applause] I'll be over there, or over there, writing down the issues that are raised. I'll note who raised the issue and who will be doing a response and/or a follow-up. That would be a council member, the city manager, or the city attorney. If the person designated to follow-up is a city employee, then I'm going to assign the issue to the city manager. If it is not clear who is to do a response or a follow-up, then I will assign the issue to the mayor. My notes will always be open for the public and for you to see, and I mean this effort to help you, to give closure to residents, and to help the council stay on track. At subsequent council meetings, when it's time for public comment, I will ask for follow-up results on each issue, and you will be aware which of you should be able to provide the information. If it sounds like I am taking it to task, I am. You are still a relatively new council, and you have a new city manager, so there is no reason to take this as a personal criticism. I will offer two examples of what I am talking about. The street sweeper. I asked about this at the last meeting. I said that I thought you had already approved the expenditure. You all said, "No, never." So with all our memories on the clear, I suggest that several other citizens who remember the issue and are investigating--
I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes are up.
Thank you. [applause]
Joe Werner, 1103 Avenue. Good afternoon. I would agree with Pam. I would say that they have to change, renew attitude on the council since the new members have joined, but that is 100% true for the previous council this year for 12 years. So a couple of just things, and I think tonight was a good example of that. When Councilman Moore brought something up, there was no, like, shoving it under, pushing it under, sweeping it under the rug. City attorney suggested we could possibly change the ordinance. That hasn't really happened in the past, and that was a positive response of this county, of the council giving direction to the city attorney and moving from there. Number two, I wanted to thank Councilman Quinn for bringing up the rebuild by design and the meeting that they're holding. There's no flyer for it, but on March 4th at the showroom, at 7:00 PM at the showroom, they're going to be doing a question and answer section. So we won't have a council meeting before then, so I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, and be probably able to make some information out to the public. Third, also wanted to thank Councilman Quinn for talking about the Palm County Economic Initiative. I saw, recall, there are no one this weekend. He mentioned the same thing to me and said he was trying to work with Asbury Park and having this new council that's actually doing that. And number four, I wanted to thank Councilman Moore in raising some of the issues dealing with the 7 o'clock meeting time. I think that there's two issues, really. As someone who's organized people to come to meetings, people have a hard time getting to the 6 o'clock meeting to call from work, as Mr. Campbell mentioned. It's tough to get them here at 6:00. It's better at 7:00, for sure. And the second issue is, it's unpredictable. It may be easier for all of us who are here every week, but it's not easier for the public to just have a floating schedule. It's easier to keep it at 7:00. So you want to be able to publish it. That's what I would say. The other thing, it was very hard for me to hear Deputy Mayor Henderson and Councilman Lefredo mention that they're really concerned about what the public has to say at 7:00 because there have been cases two years ago when we packed the house to 60 people to talk about an issue. And that former councilmate Johnson decided to move. They looked out here, saw 60 people who wanted to talk, many of them seniors, and instead of saying, "7:00, you can have your piece," they said, "You know what? Let's change it to the end of the meeting to public commentary." So the first time I've seen that happen, eight years I've been coming to meetings, they moved it to the end purposely, it seemed, so that they couldn't hear from the public or that the public would need to wait and maybe someone would go home. In fact, many seniors did have to go home. So it's unfortunate that that happened, and to hear the former councilpeople Henderson and Lefredo say that, it's a little disingenuous. And there's this on videotape next to AP-TV. They were here that night. We have the videotape, if anybody wants it, we can take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause] I said that I would-- Well, we should--
Next. I'm here to help some people, Mayor Campbell and Councilwoman Deputy Mayor. Randy Thompson asked me to come and speak. I appreciate so much that you mentioned the heroin epidemic here in New Jersey. I do not live in Asbury Park. I live in Clinton Borough, 1407 Johnson Avenue, Martin 6. I just wanted to come and touch on what's going on in our seat, as well as naloxone, the heroin antidote, as well as the reelection program, which we had a few days going to talk about. I myself am a young person in long-term recovery, which means that I have been sober for almost seven years. I got sober when I was 21. I'm not only a young person in recovery, I'm also a voter, I'm a consumer, I'm a student, I'm a friend, I'm a girlfriend, and all of those things. And so much of the problem that we have is very much based upon the stigma about addiction. You know, there is not much talk about recovery, and there isn't really a face and voice on recovery here in New Jersey. There have been some very valiant efforts in the last year between the Governor's Council on alcohol and drug addiction. I actually sit on the executive board of Bacara and Toms River. There's been also national advocacy organizations which have come to fruition, Young People on Recovery, which I'm the Secretary of New Jersey Chapter, as well as ENCAT, which is the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Tendency. And really, I just kind of-- I'm here at the Asbury Park Council meeting because of the problem here in Asbury that there is in Ocean County, Monmouth County, New Jersey. The statistics alone for 2013 speak to in Ocean and Monmouth County, there are over 200 opiate overdoses and deaths. And that's an outrageous figure. The Overdose Prevention Act was passed by Governor Christie in May 2013, and I believe that enough people do not know what the Overdose Prevention Act is. And there's two prongs of the Overdose Prevention Act. One prong is about immunity, civil and criminal immunity, for someone calling and reporting a heroin overdose, so there don't have to be charges. And I can tell you from my personal experience, when I was getting high, if someone had a medical issue, I would not have called the police out of fear for my own well-being, you know, and my own longevity with the loss. So I don't think that that is advertised enough. There are advocates trying to get bulletins all over the state. I think if Asbury tries to think about that, that would be great. But the second prong of the Overdose Prevention Act signed by Governor Christie in May is naloxone, which is, you call it the heroin antidote. And basically, in layman's terms, what it is, is it's like an EpiPen for an overdose, you know? And I don't know what legalities particularly talked about. However, I do know that there are places in Jersey that have emergency responders carrying naloxone, also called Narcan. There are trainings all over the state. There's one in Camden this coming Saturday about how to administer it. And the state is also willing to fund private trainings on how to use it for emergency responders. And it also can be prescribed by doctors. So I really just think that, you know, maybe we have a little bit more time to talk about this and examine it, that we could perform some sort of solution. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. My name is Shannon Preston, and I am a social worker and the manager of HIV Services at the VNA Central here in New Jersey, here in Asbury Park. I have worked here in Asbury Park for the past 18 years. The VNA CJ has a long history of delivering comprehensive healthcare and support services to the community here in Asbury Park. Using a holistic approach of family-centered care, the VNA has the ability to help people across the life span. Asbury Park is also home to the Prevention Resource Network, a program with Visiting Nurses Association, which is currently located at the Antique Training Station on Sunset Avenue. We have been here as a program for over 20 years. This program provides a broad range of comprehensive services, including rapid HIV testing, HIV case management, a prevention with positives initiative, an LPTQ and LPTQ drop-in center, a rapid HIV mobile unit, which will be out in the streets hopefully by the spring. We are now looking to expand services to include overdose education, naloxone distribution, healthcare education, and syringe access. Syringe access programs provide free sterile syringes that reduce the likelihood that users will share injection equipment. Syringe access programs also safely dispose of used syringes. Syringe access programs provide a range of health services, including linkage to medical care, counseling and screening for HIV, hepatitis C, and other sexually transmitted illnesses. The state of New Jersey's HIV prevention plan has long endorsed syringe access as a leading intervention in the prevention of HIV and hepatitis C. Syringe access provides a range of supportive services, including referrals for food and clothing, distribution of condoms, referral to mental health programs, and referrals to substance abuse treatment. Numerous studies have shown that syringe access becomes a bridge to treatment by helping users see the possibility of taking control not only of their health but of their addiction. Programs are currently successfully operating in five other cities throughout New Jersey. Their syringe access programs in New Jersey have been evaluated by the New Jersey Department of Health under both the Corzine and the Christie administration, and have been found to be effective in reducing HIV risk and connecting clients to drug treatment and other services. Syringe access programs are supported by leading medical and public health organizations. Program success depends on the community, a coordinated effort by the VNA, the state, and the city. The VNA is seeking a city ordinance which will allow us to provide syringe access here in Asbury Park. I am requesting from the council at this time not only to meet with you individually as a council, but to do a presentation in the later date.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Randy Thompson, 1513 Park Avenue. And I just want to get it out of the way before I forget about it. The public session is the one time when people can go up and know that they're communicating their thoughts and concerns to the elected officials, so I would ask you not to move that around. It's a typical city, of course, City of Happy City, and that's the one thing we can kind of count on. So starting with that, I just want to thank Ariel for sharing her story, for coming here tonight, as well as Shannon for proposing a great program that can stop the spread of bloodborne diseases like HIV, hepatitis. And what we're hearing, we're talking about these things, this is harm reduction policies. And you're going to hear it from a statewide expert, which is Roseanne Scotty later, but we've had law enforcement close to a public health issue of drug use, which has not worked for 40 years. What was needed were some new solutions. And the Drug Policy Alliance proposed those new solutions in the form of needle exchanges as far as the Overdose Prevention Act. And so I didn't hear since, you know, beginning of the new year, asking the city to kind of get behind these initiatives, which are state law. And we can do this on our own as activists in community, but if the city, the mayor, the deputy mayor, the council were to get behind it, you could reach the constituents. It's a lot better. Not enough people know about this law. The Overdose Prevention Act, as Mary Old saying, offers those immunities and encourages people to call for help when they learn it's an overdose, and it just takes away the concern. So we're here in Asbury Park. We do have, unfortunately, a great heroin market, and we're one of the top heroin-using communities in the state. We're in town. Once we're in our 16,000 people, we're making the top 40. So what are we going to do? This is us. But it'd be great to see the council get behind this, promoting it, so that people are aware of it. And certainly, if you could listen to Shannon, she'd likely, you know, give a presentation, that we can just absorb the facts, digest the information about the benefits of putting something in place that will spread, stop the spread of HIV and other bloodborne diseases. Because we do know that we have large populations that are using injection drugs that are, you know, predisposed to substance use because of all the hallmark issues, environmental violence, familial violence, poor education, housing. These are things that kind of push people to the edge and then overlook that. And, you know, there's a lot of life left on the other side of addiction, and these are policies that allow us to enjoy, to live, to enjoy, and also live without, knowing HIV or hepatitis. So--
Do you have one question?
Sure.
No, I was just, what towns in New Jersey are doing needle exchange? I know you mentioned, you said that a number of towns in New Jersey. Can you just name, like, three of them?
Let me answer that if I can. I can provide you with information, but once again, there are some technical difficulties coming up in Attorney General's office as far as the antidote, but I can leave that in question. Hopefully, you're not defended by this. But can we strike from the record? Asbury Park is a great heroin market?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Rovere, 1501 Avenue. Did want a couple of questions and then a comment on the public participation. I did like, I've been to a lot of council meetings in other places. This little break in between when you folks stopped and the 7:00, I saw a lot of relationship building out here. It's actually, I would like that a lot to have a break. I just watched it happen this evening. I think that's a very important part of the community, and it should be captured. Also, I'd like to tell the board that the folks from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers did a great job doing beach nourishment. They were professional, they were period, and they worked like dogs. They were working there all night long in the blizzards. They just did a great job. I would like to have a notice for the folks in North Beach when they have the triathlon for closing as part of your events component, because you wake up at 7:00 in the morning and the lanes are closed, and nobody knows what's going on. So unless you're really tuned into that event, there should be some outreach to that community group, and they have an internal notice procedure that they should be adopted as part of your events component. And finally, as far as the question, when will the boardwalk south of the convention center be back open? It'd be helpful if there was some sort of sign of the schedule line, because a lot of people continue to wonder when that's going to happen. So it'd be helpful to just inform me a couple of things.
Is Joe here tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. You know what? If you leave your name, and I know I've seen you before, but your name and number with the city manager, I'm sure he can get some information, ultimate information if one is going to be finished.
I was fortunate enough to meet Marshall in the hallway this afternoon. We chatted for 15 minutes, and I do have his phone number.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Rovere.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor's Council. I'm Lori Ross. We're pressing the West Side Community Center. I want to first begin by thanking Councilman Lefredo, Deputy Mayor Sue Henderson, as well as Mayor Johnson, the relentless efforts of our Councilman Kevin Thames, as well as Jimmy Bruno regarding the support for the West Side Community Center. And I hope this council will continue and even expand upon that. However, I am here tonight as a follow-up to a meeting with Mayor Meyer Campbell in City Hall about a month ago in relation to the bathroom issues and some other issues, and I wanted to advise the rest of the council about that. Just for the record, there are open permits for the bathroom improvements that were done about a year ago using community development block grant funds to include a failure sticker, and the contractor was already paid. So these are open permits, so outstanding from a year ago. We also had a heating system installed at a gym over three years ago, paid for by Interfaith Neighbors through the Neighbor Residualization Tax Credit Initiative. This permit's open for three years and only being closed on January 30th, 2014. The construction officials closed this permit after we raised the issue and during inspection of our fire alarm system. Couple of questions for the mayor and the city council, which consists of the following. How does the city pay a contractor before the job passes all inspections, specifically when you're using federal funds? Number two, how does the construction office close permit when the company that did the work, which was New Jersey Resources Commercial Home Services, was not even present and when they were doing the final inspection on our fire alarm? Also, despite what you were told, Mr. Kelly, the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan was never approved by HUD. As a matter of fact, it was never accepted, despite, again, what you were previously told. There are also material deficiencies in the plan given out by the Community Development Department, and I have an email from HUD indicating that. Now, again, we'd like to know, you know, who is responsible for all this? This is a follow-up. I know Reverend Bradley was not able to attend this meeting. I know he reached out to you, Mayor Campbell, to know a bailout, and we'd like to know what's going on also with regards to this operation dead-end. I was just asked by a young lady from the Tri-City News to give a quote. My quote is, as I've said numerous times, "The West Side Community Center and the good and decent families, children on Zerwick Avenue, we are under siege, and we need help, not being chased around regarding code enforcement violations. We need support." And we have consistently, by the grace of God, been able to keep our doors open, trying to provide some level of services for the children. So I'm looking for this council to let us know what we're going to do about all these outstanding issues. And again, with all these issues going on about the federal community development block grant file, I think that you should be concerned.
Thank you.
Jim Henry, 6 Avenue. At the latest council meeting, I asked a couple of questions. First one I asked, what's happening with the decorative lamppost in front of the library that got hit by a car and destroyed? That goes back several years, two or three at least. Another question I asked about the snow removal and the possibility of a snow removal ordinance. That was also discussed several years ago, and hasn't gotten anywhere. Is this something that the councilants might be interested in? If so, I think we ought to start preparing for next year. It's going to take a long time to come up with an ordinance that will solve the problems and not create more. And I think that something like this needs to be looked into. I'd also like to comment on the issue of changing the timing of the meeting. Several things in Asbury Park are in very bad shape, and the meeting schedule is not long. I think we ought to attack some of the problems that really exist rather than potentially creating a new problem by changing the time of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roseanne Scotty, and I'm not from Asbury Park. I run Drug Policy Alliance in New Jersey, and our office is in Trenton, but we do work all over the state. And we were involved in the passage of two of the bills that have been talked about tonight. One is the Overdose Prevention Act that was signed by Governor Christie recently, and the other is Syringe Access Law, which was signed by Governor Corzine. And so a little information about these, I brought some posters and flyers that I can distribute to the council, and we also have them if folks want them for their community groups or locations. We had these drawn up after the law was passed, and it basically encourages people to call 911 in an emergency. Accidental drug overdose is the leading cause of accidental death here in New Jersey, the leading cause. It surpasses car accidents, it surpasses gun violence, and we are increasingly seeing it among our young people. And we got involved in this work, and we're joined in this work by parents and families all over New Jersey, many of whom had lost loved ones, usually children, to accidental overdoses. And the main barrier to someone calling for help in those situations is that they're afraid to get arrested. There's about 20 states now that have these laws. These laws have bipartisan support. We got both of these laws through the legislature with bipartisan support. Governor Christie signed the Overdose Prevention Act. She signed it at a treatment facility in Patterson, New Jersey, and it particularly got a lot of attention because Jon Bon Jovi showed up. And he had a reason to show up, and that was because his daughter, who was in college in New Jersey, had overdosed. She had been arrested when her friend called 911, and the charges were brought by the police because of the law that we got passed in New Jersey, and so he had a personal story about that. Our view is that it is always more important to save a life than to punish behavior, and when we see particularly our young people, but anybody overdosing in these situations, these are lives that don't have to be lost. We also had small cards made up. They can be given out at treatment facilities, at schools. We have some colleges now ask for quantities of them, and we're happy to send them to you. They can be given out, and people can keep them in their wallet and just say, "Pick up the phone, call 911." There's also a billboard campaign that has now been launched around the state, and some of the billboard companies actually donated the billboards, because we do not have that kind of money. But one of our parent advocates called up, and now they're going to be all up and down New Jersey, saying the Overdose Prevention Act will say you call 911. So we'd love to help do some education around that here in New Jersey. The second piece, as someone else mentioned, is naloxone. And let me just say, I drafted the Overdose Prevention Act, so I'm pretty sure that EMTs and police officers were meant to be able to distribute it, but there does seem to be some issues. We've been on the phone with the Attorney General's office, and they assure us that there will be a protocol forthcoming for the police so that they can carry the naloxone and then also--
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
If you would like to leave that, I would appreciate it. Maybe we could help distribute some of those.
I think one final, the five cities with syringe access programs are Camden, Atlantic City, North Patterson, and Jersey City, and they've been successfully running for six years.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor's Council. Please go, say hello to our deputy mayor in Asbury. I was reviewing the bill resolution, and I came across two items for Mitchell Humphrey Department. One is general plan, and it says maintenance fee for 1983. And then again, on code enforcement, Mr. Langus, Mitchell Humphrey, 1383. And again, construction code, Mitchell Humphrey, 1384. I was--
What page of the book is it, you want?
I'm sorry?
Can you read the book?
Sure. It's bottom of six, and seven is it. My question is, who is Mitchell Humphrey?
You want to finish this, bring this, and it's a little over 10, I will.
Well, the thing is, when you said maintenance fee, I don't know, are we paying someone to come in and clean these offices, or is it for something else? It's not in real detail. If we're paying somebody cleaning offices, I didn't have an issue with that, because we do have employees, and it doesn't look like-- I don't know what it is, so that's why I'm here to ask.
Seven.
That's it.
I saw, I asked the same questions. I pulled 20 to 30 BOs and go into finance every week before the meeting, day before the meeting, and it's for computer maintenance, and it's split between three departments.
It's for what?
Computer maintenance.
Yeah, let me say that Mitchell Humphrey is the name of the software that most towns use for the construction department. So it is just the name of the company that has written the software, and the city pays a maintenance fee to that company on an annual basis.
Did you see how my mind could have gone? Hmm, okay.
So did mine, but I answered the question. And that's why it's split between departments, because construction, other departments, code uses it, so that's why it's a split chart.
All right.
[inaudible] Gate Avenue. I guess we read the paper a lot this week, but what took me by the--
So it is just the name of the company that has written the software, and the city pays a maintenance fee to that company on an annual basis.
Did you see how my mind could have gone? Hmm, okay.
So am I. But I asked the question, and that's why it's split between departments because construction, other departments code uses it. So that's why it's a split chart.
All right.
Rita Brown, Gate Avenue. I guess we read the paper a lot this week, but what took me by surprise, and it was stunning fact, that somebody didn't pay $600,000. I can't believe that $600,000 went unnoticed, never on the tax lien list all these years. Can anybody explain that? $600,000 of back taxes? You see little people on there for $100. You put them on the tax lien list. And somebody that owes $600,000 doesn't get put on their tax anywhere. Then you read the paper, and it tells you that they have to get this certificate of completion. Well, that was completed five years ago, and people are living in there paying thousands of dollars rent. And then they tell you that there was supposed to be a parking garage, and then he paid his parking fees, whatever they want. Why didn't he put up that parking garage that he needs? No, he closed off the property, and he charges his tenants $100 a month without building a parking ramp. Now, something's going on here because a $600,000 tax bill cannot be overlooked. And I would like an explanation for that if I could get it. And the other thing is the special services, no, the special events. They also, people don't pay. Aren't they supposed to pay before they have their event? I mean, I was in business for 22 years. I think I know business a little bit. I mean, this place is not going to run like a business. Tonight, all you heard was about people with social services. You've got to take care of the taxpayers in this city. They're the ones that are suffering. And I don't see anybody trying to collect. I called the tax collector, although he was off for two days and then another half a day. He was not able to answer any of the questions. Shouldn't he be out trying to get that $600,000? I don't know who's supposed to collect it, but I'm sure Reedy knew about it. And then editorial comes out that he was ambled. He was a good city manager. Is that a good city manager? When you don't collect $600,000 and you know about it? You had to know about it. He made the deal. I mean, like, it's just ridiculous that you treat people as stupid in this town, that they don't know what's going on. But they do. And special events, $600,000, I think was in the paper. Why wasn't that collected before the event? That's the way it should be. I mean, and it's just horrendous what's going on here. Nobody's collecting money. And thank you, John, for bringing it all out. I mean, I don't know if I should do that, but I did. How would they know about it? We're taxpayers. When you see the tax lien list in December, then they tell you it's 100% collection. They insult you too when they knew that there was $600,000 that was standing. And I'd like to give this to the city manager. Thank you. Okay. If you would like to answer it, I'd like to give an explanation of this. Rita, do you want to respond?
What?
Do you want to respond?
Yeah. I said, "Please."
Well, just a regular response.
Would you like to respond? I don't get your response.
All I can tell you is that is true about the money being owed, but it had to do with the last C O P issue. And that is something that does need to be looked at as far as the parking spaces go. The deal was that parking spaces had to be provided. And as of right now, those parking spaces are being provided. If it changes and the property is used for another purpose, those parking spaces still have to be provided. And that's the law. Thank you.
Yeah, but he didn't build the parking ramp. He had five years.
Thank you.
No, that isn't how it works, but thank you.
Yes, it does. I'm sorry.
Mayor Campbell, City Council, City Manager. I'm John Morris, DAB Chapter 85, Asbury Park. And in one of my moments came out tonight, especially to thank the mayor and the council for the housing activities on Thursday at the senior center. We started out at Asbury Park with 29 members at the Monk County Boardroom on One Door Avenue in 2010. Now we have 160 members, and we meet Thursdays to do intake for veterans. And the city's assistant talks to that. We meet one Saturday a month in Monk County Correction to do our monthly meeting. And we've got great success for veterans in Asbury Park and Neptune for resolving disputes with the Veterans Administration and giving money for injuries in service. So we thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve the area of veterans, and that's all we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. You know what? I might mention, because I found this out a couple of weeks ago, that we have our young men going off to war to fight for us. There are 50,000 homeless veterans. 50,000. Thank you.
Please, the mayor and councilors, welcome Mr. Kelly once again. Thank you. Dwayne Small, 1304 Madison Avenue. One of the things that I've been hearing is that, you know, a lot of stuff is coming up since we got, you know, a new majority on the council. If y'all find something, where somebody did something illegal, listen, don't hide it. Don't hide it. Mr. Moore, Ms. Campbell, and Ms. Quinn, we took grief coming to this mic for speaking out about things that were taking place. Y'all remember. So if y'all find something, give it. Give it. Because guess what? They looking at y'all right now. And also, we got an election coming up. Basically, this is a lame duck session. So don't do nothing that's going to jeopardize the people. Listen to what the people have to say. Y'all know. Same thing with that tax debate. Y'all know how the people feel about that. Y'all know what's going on with our baby. Like I said, y'all find something, give it. Let me know. I'll be the first one to put them on the flags. Because you know why? I remember coming to this microphone and being talked about. I'm this, I'm that. They put articles in the paper about me. He a thug, he a criminal, this, that. But they failed to mention that I took that young boy off the street the other night, stopping from getting trouble. They failed to mention that I gave that lady money to feed her kids. They failed to mention all that, but it's fine, y'all. But like I said, give it. Because guess what? There's something in there. And when you sit up there in them seats, them is called the hot seats. When I was coming up, we used to have something called a site. You get in the middle of the site, and it was on the hot seat. You had to take whatever came to you. But you had to remember, don't take it personally. It's only business. This is about the people. It's not about you. It's not about me. It's about us. And you know, I want to finish on this. You know, I want to commend the police for taking them guns off the street and doing what they did. That's the enforcement side. We also need to be somewhere where we can provide opportunities to prevent them from having to deal with enforcement. So that's why, Ms. Quinn, I want to congratulate you on pushing this thing about this flagrant program. And I would like the whole city council, all of y'all, to get behind Ms. Quinn and help her push this and show our young men and women in the community that we are for them, that we are not about just knocking them down or locking them up, that we want to see them succeed. Remember, look at me, y'all. I was one of them young men on the street. I was one of them young men on the street. I was in prison before. But guess what? I won two elections. Would have been three, but you know what went on. Thank you.
Yeah, I was seventeen when I was down in Asbury Park. I mean, while Wayne Small. This looks like a Baptist church with more women here than men. First Amy, commend you on the flagrant program. Let's make sure that that works because every kid we give a job, there's one kid who does not go out there and look for an alternative way to make money. Okay? And that's what it's about. I looked in the paper, and I know some of those kids, and they didn't start out wanting to build buildings, even though they did break the law and things don't happen because they did break the law. It's imperative that the city, and it's incumbent upon the city, want to make sure that a lot of these kids have jobs out here. A lot of the people who work on the boardwalk don't come from this town, and I understand that. I understand that if I got a kid that needs a job, I'm going to give him a job. My dad gave me a job. Okay? But my dad also hired a lot of soldiers that came home from Vietnam. He also hired a lot of young people that needed gigs, and they all, when he died, they thanked me for him giving them a job. So we just can't look at somebody and say, it don't work like that. I can't get jobs to keep you. Okay? Second thing, I wrote a column in The Sun the other day, and I know everybody read it because my phone has been ringing forever. But I want you to look at cap and retirement pay. And I heard, well, we can't do that. Yes, you can. They've done it all over the state. And when I see the city council give away a quarter of a million dollars at three meetings for retirement, and I was a teacher for 32 years and had my retirement cap, I could have got $80,000 too, but they knocked it down to 15. I bit the bullet, and I'm still happy. Okay? Everybody, employees, employers, have to come together and save the city money. And that's going to take an effort on the part of the city council, the unions, the lawyers, the city manager, and everybody else. But like I said months ago, we're in an extreme situation, so we have to take extreme measures in order to fix it. And if we have to cap retirement pay on people to do it, I'm sorry, or else we're going to be paying taxes again. Okay? So I mean, that has to be done. You can't say, well, my lawyer said it. Hey, you work for us, okay? If my taxes pay, you'll pay. Okay? Okay? Don't do it.
I'm not sure if you're referring to something that I said, because I provide an opinion on that.
No, no, no.
So you have Labor Council.
Yeah, because you still, you're a lawyer to me. All you all say. And they can say that about me. No, 13 years old, they're saying to me. Okay? Now, I don't say, I say what I mean. Okay, finally, I'm always here on behalf of my church.
Excuse me. You know, could you please do this?
Sounds like Judge Judy. Talk to me.
No, Judge Judy, it would do this. I'm just asking you to address the council, please.
I'm addressing everybody, okay?
I'm asking you to address the council.
Just turn around.
To the council. Not to me.
Y'all don't count. Okay? Now, if you're happy. My church is having a meeting on March 1st with Reverend Crowell. You took me off the time, so I didn't say that. Reverend Crowell, who worked with Martin and Decane, will be doing a speech, and he will be talking to us about the civil rights struggle. The reason I bring that to the city is because we want all men there. I don't care if you're white, blue, Spanish, Portuguese, black, Puerto Rican, gay, straight. I want all men to come because we like to share things that we do with other people in the community. That is one way of blending fences in the community and bringing us closer together.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sure. You know what? I'm going to ask you to step aside. You've had over three minutes, so the next speaker can come to the mic.
Y'all make that when y'all get up here, okay? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sandra Mack. I live in 214, Kedham. I'm here on behalf of, you can hear me? I'm here on behalf of the children of Asbury Park. Everybody always downgrading these kids and talking bad about them. These kids don't have nothing to look forward to. When they come home from school, there's no school activities. There's nothing being, there's nothing kid-friendly in this town. But everybody just want to down, talk about them, kick them to the curb, call them the worst of the worst. And we all stick together. We all talking about issues that don't mean nothing. The babies are our future. I don't see nobody trying to add to our future. I don't see no mentors. I don't see nobody trying to do nothing for these kids. These kids on medicated drugs. I mean, where's the rehabilitation at? Everybody's saying, oh, just throw them in jail and let them live like animals. No. We as the people in this town, the council, and everybody need to step up, take part of raising these children. That's all I got to say. Step up and stop talking. That's all everybody do around here. Help them. Thank you.
Jerry Sclan, Long Branch. Well, I wanted to ask the city manager to help me out. One of the things that fell through the black hole that Pam was talking about is the years I've been asking that all the buildings in town have street numbers on them. We have the police department that's running code enforcement. I believe all houses should have street numbers. The other thing I asked in the past was that all multifamilies have porch lights that go on it at nighttime because, like roaches, the criminals like darkness. Okay? Now, in the press on February 11th, Mr. LaFredo was quoting, and one of the things that came to us, when it comes time, one of the quotes was about the municipal court for collecting the fines and fees. You said it was burdensome for the council, for the court to do the collection. You did nothing to get them collected when you knew about the problem. Once again, you forgot about the taxpayers. You and Reedy decided, well, we'll just raise the taxes for the past five years the taxes have been high-locked in. Second quote, not sure who's responsible was to ensure the pilot and special fees were paid. I want to help you and the city. It was you and Henderson's responsibility to ensure that the city was collecting the money. And you, and if Reedy didn't do it, then you should have done it. You should have dealt with it. But just like Reedy made the million-dollar budget error last year, nothing happened. Don't worry, the taxpayers will pay the bill. You wrote a letter to the coaster, a really long letter, longer than most people, but that's okay. The first paragraph, you talked about your vision and the city's future. The future is here. So let me review your list of accomplishments. This may be a valuable lesson for you to learn. We're the highest crime rate in the county, highest tax rate in the county, raising taxes 50% over the last seven years, where property values fell, highest youth unemployment. No wonder why we have a high dropout rate. Like, your pilot program that you gave money away, you robbed students by entering into pilot program that you and Sue voters bought. I assume this was your vision. Correct me if I'm wrong with the list. Thank you.
Thank you. You're wrong with most of these. Arnold Paul Diver, Asbury Park. I've never spoken at meetings in all the years I've been coming, but I got to be honest with you. First of all, Mr. LaFredo, I don't know how you do it, but thank God. Amy, I'd like to have a little information on the flagrant program. And Mayor, I love you to death, but your comments are getting out of hand. How can you sit there as mayor and say you have no idea how much Asbury Park Police had to do with this Operation Dead End? You said that. You are on top of everything. You've had discussions. You knew what was going on. That's not fair to do to the fire police department in this town. Okay? The other day, as you know, the guy that works from his house was shot up over on Madison Avenue across the street from you. We run into each other at City Hall. You said to me, you know they're going to kill him. You don't say to me, Arnold, how can I help you so this guy don't get killed with his family in the house? Unheard of. Unheard of. Okay? And that's all I got to say. The police department, the fire department, who I used the ambulance service a couple of weeks ago for my mom, they should be commended, not broken down here in front of all these people in the town, saying you didn't know what was going on, and you didn't know how much involvement our police department had in this. It doesn't make a difference. Keep your comments to yourself. Thank you.
I will personally respond to that, and I will respond to it in this fashion. That sweep was a sting. I don't believe any council person up here knew that that was going to take place.
As you should.
Okay. So please don't get up to the mic and say, I should be ashamed that I did not know what was going on because I didn't. And I would say to you, talk to the prosecutor, and please talk to the chief of police, because there is a priority when such an operation is taking place, and not everyone is privy to that. Now, that's my first point. So when you get to the mic, at least talk to the prosecutor's office and talk to the chief of police. You also know the house that got shot at four times at least. You know the history. You know what happened to that young man in October. So they're not going to go away.
That's not, that's not my point. You make a comment that he's going to end up... You make a comment that he's going to end up being killed. You don't say to me, "Arnold, we have funding. We have this, we have that. How can we help this man before he gets killed or his family?"
Uh, thank you. Thank you.
My three minutes is enough?
Is it?
No. And you also make a comment that you don't know how much the Asbury Park Police Department had to do with this Operation Dead End.
And I don't.
Well, why would you make a comment like that? What do you think they had nothing to do with it?
Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
I think Amy's answer.
Thank you.
I can talk a little bit, I can spend a couple minutes on the flag.
Thank you.
So it's something that we previously had, and we use a lot of police officers right now to redirect traffic, right? It's called flagmen. So the idea behind the flagmen program is training youth in town and not necessarily youth and police officers for events like that. So it would provide training, a little bit of pocket money for them. So where we're at is joke and a robust memo, what we need to do it. We got to get the funding, to be quite honest, to get it done. So that's my next, that's on my to-do list. Jack's well aware of my interest in getting this program on the ground and trying to get some of the youth in town a job.
Well, I would love to help you. But anyway, I've been trying to get the list of all the kids in town that have already been through the train.
Excuse me. If you would like that information, if you can get in touch with either the city manager tomorrow, I'm sure you will assist you.
I put over a request in for three months, and you'll talk to your back.
He's asking.
Amy, thank you for mentioning that.
So someone else said it?
Yeah. Because we have been criticized.
How can you say that?
I said, "Thank you, Amy, for mentioning that program. I had been here previously." Because we're going to be criticized in previous council rounds. Motion close.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Uh, you're a member of the legislature on January nineteenth, Councilmember Lefredo is out there, and a member of the legislature on February fifth.
I got to change to two minutes.
What happened? I missed a minute. One minute, you got thirty seconds.
Ready?
Uh, motion.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Uh, yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
No resolution including border incursion and also the payroll resolution, total amount being three million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
The workers' compensation for fifteen transactions, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Any applications for gravel license from Mercy Center? Second, Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Uh, special events outlined by Tom Gilmore, not including Jazz Festival and not including Rock the Truck event.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, and tip on three and five. You're only know, only know, and agree on the bottom. Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
City manager, do you want to say?
Yeah, I think at this time, I'd like to remove item D from the resolution list. The resolution do amend city council budget.
No. If it's not move over, you need to vote, it can just be pulled from each other.
Okay.
I got an application yesterday from Johnny Max. She didn't know that she had it, have it in, but it's, they want to extend their premises into the parking lot in conjunction with the, they have a plate parade. So I don't know if you guys want to act on that.
Can we have it in writing?
Well, I, 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 I can do it at the next meeting, but then, but then she only has two days to get it from the ABC. I don't know whether or not they'll give it to you, but it'll be there two weeks before.
Is it the same area, Steve, where Johnny Max has expanded in the past? Because this isn't the first time that they had events that have been in the parking area.
It's the same application you've gotten before.
Correct. And it's for one day or the same type of period?
It's at your discretion. Under the guidelines, it's supposed to be submitted to the ABC two weeks prior, so there might be some jeopardy for the applicant if they're, if you wait until the next council meeting. It was submitted late, so it's their fault. It's up to you.
Well, I can take it this. Personally, I have it on record, the Chamber of Commerce submitted something, I think this to the car, Expo, and personally, I didn't see someone be thinking to me this late night stint. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the council can't vote.
You want to read something, I'll move it. Whether you want to go down or up, that's not what I'm talking about, so read something.
It's an application to Johnny Max to extend their liquor license into the parking lot on the day of these.
March the ninth.
March the ninth.
From what happens?
Uh, I don't have a prior question. Or a lead law. Like I said, we've done that in the past for the ten, twelve times. I'll move it.
I'll second the question. And you know, just so long as, I mean, I know what they've done before, and we haven't had a problem, right? I mean, this is something.
No problems at all. I had a conversation on the phone with Steve earlier today. I didn't get a chance to review it, but it is the same thing that they do for different special events, holidays, just using the parking lot to set up their standout. No issues with it at all. I just didn't get a chance today to stop by and sign off online, but.
All right. And I just, I just want to make, you know, I don't want to start a precedent. We are the local ABC, actually, this board. I don't want to start a precedent that we're going to start doing this for people, but if they don't get their application on time, we're just going to.
Well, I, I told her that yesterday.
I mean, he's lucky that, you know, it's a standard, he does the same thing all the time, and we know the scope of what he's going to do.
Well, I read her the rock hand yesterday. Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes, but I'd like this to be the last one.
Mayor Campbell.
Of the city.
Yeah, I just hope it's in conjunction with Murray. Anything we expect to be shown for Alston in number two?
Yeah. It's crazy. Troy, Tibo? Wait, that's me. I don't know, but I just don't like his resume, truly. This is something.
The motion for, uh, improve, uh.
I'll move it.
Second.
And do you have the expiration date, Steve? Is it for an unexpired term?
Yeah, for, uh, altering number two. I believe it begins this year, twelve thirty-one, fourteen. So, Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Resolution authorizing transfer of two thousand thirteen appropriation reserve budget fiscal year two thousand and fourteen.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Resolution, Mayor Council, ratifying and reconfirming determination of a financial agreement with Esperanza Urban Renewal LLC.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Avatar is in the coaster on February sixth, two thousand and fourteen, public hearing on two ordinances. The first one is statute of police chaplain. Most of them open up the hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All favor. Anyone like to be heard on this one?
Move close.
Second.
All favor.
All right. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo.
Yes.
More, yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Than Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Second hearing is on, ordinance of ending chapter four, titled general licensing, section four, title enforcement, and section four dash one, entitled access to premises of the revised general ordinances of City United thirty-four. Let's fill up the back here.
Move it.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Anyone like to be a guard on that ordinance?
Could you explain that, Steve? What does that mean?
I can explain it. It deals with the mercantile licenses that are issued within the city. And at the request of our former acting city manager, who had been working with a group within code enforcement, they determined that there were some ambiguous provisions that were in our current ordinance with regard to who is authorized to enforce it, as well as who would be able to have access to the premises. And this ordinance basically is a cleanup item, and it clarifies the appropriate city officials who are going to be authorized to enforce the chapter dealing with mercantile licensing and to have access to the premises in connection with mercantile licenses.
And who are they?
The director of licenses, any police officer of the city, the construction code official of the city, the zoning officer, any health officer, or any other city official or employee authorized by the city manager.
You done reading it?
Yeah.
Okay. Point of order. It would be very helpful, before you vote on things like this or introduce them, that you give an explanation. You ran through a list of things just prior to this, where I'm sure nobody had any clue what they were about, but, uh, the Asprey thing, but the chaplain thing was not explained. But anyway, I'm here to comment on this. I'm interested in the public policy issues that this involves. It mentions the director of licenses. I've never heard of that position in the city of Asbury Park. Who is the director of licenses?
My understanding that Tamika is the director of licenses? I do not know her last names, I'm sorry.
That is, Tamika's that. And what's the actual official employment title? Because there is no such title, as far as I understand.
She works out of code enforcement. I don't know the exact title.
He's administrative clerk. Administrative clerk, okay. So how do you reconcile somebody with a title, official title, an administrative clerk, taking on the new title of ordinance of the director of licenses, which doesn't exist? That's one issue that I agree with. Uh, the other is, I'm very concerned about civil rights issues with this. Now, everyone drives a car. Now, everyone understands that if you get a driver's license, you are submitting to certain things, such as breathalyzer tests, testing. There's no notice required for things like that for being on the road as part of a license. Now, the way I'm reading this is this seems to imply that these mentioned individuals, in addition to the director of licenses, can simply walk into a property and inspect the property or ask the business owner what's going on with his business. Is that the same kind of logic as a driver's license? By giving a mercantile license to somebody, do they basically agree that they can be inspected without notice at any point in time by anybody that's on this list now?
I certainly don't have any answer to that.
These officials would now be authorized to have access to the building or premises for the purpose of ascertaining whether there's been compliance with the chapter. So the problem was that the previous language was completely ambiguous and just referenced the licensed inspector or his or her accredited agents or assistants or other authorized city officials. Now you have specific individuals who are identified within the ordinance. Uh, it was something that a working group, from what I understand from the code enforcement office, along with the former acting city manager, had put together that would help to resolve this ambiguity.
Thank you, Fred. I understand that. That's pretty clear from the crossouts of the auditions. But my question is the civil rights issue and the public policy issue. Normally, when inspections are done, you're given a notice. In ten days, you know, we're going to come over and inspect X, Y, Z, or there's some allegation of something being wrong, in order to warrant an inspection. A warrant legally issued to enter without notice is usually the typical thing that happens for a property. Is all of that waived and shoved under the table with this now?
No. Any, any business owner would have all rights that they're entitled to under law. I mean, this would.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What is the law? By giving a mercantile license, do they then agree that they are subject to inspection without notice at any time, or just during business hours, or whatever? What's the standard for inspecting? The reason I bring this up is, I'll explain. Years ago, there was a situation with property owners, that owned apartment buildings in the city, where code officials just showed up unannounced and started rolling through buildings, doing inspections. This case went to court, a lawsuit against the city. And the city lost, actually. And the judgment was that as part of the settlement, there had to be a reasonable notice. I believe it was thirty days of notice given to property owners before their properties are inspected. Now, that's something you could, you could look up. It doesn't apply to commercial mercantile licenses, but I'm doing a parallel out here to figure out how this is supposed to work.
This was put in because people want to get mercantile licenses, and the city had an ordinance which they were paying a person a stipend to make sure that they had a mercantile license, and he would go down to your store and say, "Warner, you don't have a mercantile license, and you have thirty days to get one, or else you're going to get a summons." But he could not enforce that. Nobody in the city could enforce that, except police. So now we're adding people, be it Tamika, be it code enforcement, others, to go into this absence and say, "Hey, Mr. Baumgartner, you know, it's February the eighteenth, you're supposed to get a mercantile license by January thirty-first, you know, however, would you please go down to City Hall and get one, or else you're going to get a summons."
Okay. So this only applies to the presentation of a mercantile license by somebody?
That was specifically a mercantile license.
Correct. That's not what I'm reading here. This is, this is referring to inspections.
Well, inspections, well, inspections, because I could have, I could have an arcade on the board, which there are, and I could say I have thirty pinball machines. I'm supposed to pay fifty dollars for each pinball machine. I got fifty. So it could be an inspection also, or else I have a score desk in town, and I put down my mercantile license. I have X, Y, and Z, but I got A through Z. So it is also could be inspection. Hey, Mr. Baumgartner, on your mercantile license, you listed six machines. You got sixteen machines. Again, you have thirty days to go down and correct it, pay the adjusted fee, or else then you will get a summons.
Those are all good examples.
Okay.
I'm going into somebody's kitchen, a restaurant, just wandering into a kitchen and starting to inspect without notice, without announcement.
Does that say that? This is just relating to licensing. It's in the mercantile licensing section of the code.
License, it's not health department.
It's the same law. This language has been changed to include people that are now part of code enforcement.
Okay.
But we're getting paid a stipend, and they were getting paid a stipend, and they quit doing their job.
Bringing these issues up, because I think they need to be clarified.
Okay.
So years ago, there was a code official in town, a little history lesson, John Max history, there was a code official in town who used to go inspect for, what was it, pool tables, I think it was. And he would charge the business owner for pool tables. One day, he didn't show up. The business owner called the city and said, hey, where's my inspection for the pool tables? They told him there is no such thing. That inspector was fired and barred for purposes.
Thank you.
Couple of questions with regards to the ordinance. If the change in the ordinance is to essentially get people to do their jobs in mercantile ways, if they haven't done it now, which is stipend, what makes you think any change in the language will make you do your job? That's number one. Number two, is a director of license, is that a civil service position? And if so, what are the qualifications for that position? For example, you have a community development director, and it's titled, which is a civil service title, that doesn't necessarily have the qualification for that position, being paid a stipend to do that job. So that is problematic when you go to administer, particularly the community development director, administer as a community development block grant fund.
Give it, Laura, distinct statement on this order.
So my question is, is a director of license, a civil service title, and if so, what are the qualifications for that position?
I understand what you're saying, but it's not, we're specifically talking about the ordinance itself.
But if, in the ordinance, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, if Mr. Kelly wants to get together and talk to you about that. I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's a legitimate question.
And that's why I'm asking. And thank you so much.
You know, unfortunately, I wasn't part of the preparation of this ordinance. I am unfamiliar with the title, director of licenses, but I surely will work back to you.
Okay, I'll make sure you have a contact open. Thank you.
I do object to that title, director. That's what's, that hurts, and he's now a clerk, and you're making her a director. I mean, like, it's backwards. You're supposed to take the test, become a director, if you're going to be, but that puts you in another category. And I think that's an unclassified position, and that's a little more dangerous for that person. You can't take a clerk and make him a director. That's got to be taken out of there. The wording isn't right.
For our knowledge, is there any additional A associated with that title?
No. She was not the person getting a stipend last year either.
But that's not, just changing her title, it's a director, makes it different.
I don't think you change her title, I think it's.
Yeah, if this is. This person has been assigned this responsibility, and it is somewhat easier, easier vernacular to say director of licensing as opposed to administrative clerk, because, you know, she's responsible for taking care of the licensing, which is typical clerk's responsibility.
I don't think she's an administrative clerk. That's even a higher position. I think she's just a clerk. I mean, like, you're promoting somebody to a director.
Well, again, we're not promoting anyone to a director. It's just what we're calling per assignment, being responsible or taking care of licensing, under the supervision of code enforcement director, of which right now I believe I am.
But when you change titles like that, it's a dangerous move, because you expect them at a different position. And they're not qualified to begin with, to be directors.
There's no change in title. There's no change in her job title, there's no salary increase. It's something when, how many years ago, they took the mercantile license out of the city clerk's office, they moved it upstairs to code, and it was just called director of licenses instead of administrative balance.
I know, I bought one for 22 years. And I bought it on time, too.
Well, that's what this ordinance is going to do, make sure everybody gets one and make sure they're paying the right fees.
Motion closed.
Your second.
All favor.
Aye.
Let's move on to the order.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Caprado?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Jeff Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
And I read from the last meeting, which is probably the respect you've filed your tax, you have to work.
Couldn't you try to?
No, I'm not recommending that you move forward with it this evening, unless you've made a determination that you're not a district attorney. Because there are some issues that were raised, the last council meeting, that have not been resolved.
No, we have to take, move to table.
All favor.
No.
Well, my second.
Are we referring to the fire impact exception? Yeah, it's already tabled. There would only be a lot of leave to bring it back on the table if you so chose. So really, when an item is listed that would be tabled, no action necessary.
So I can make a motion to bring it back?
You can make a motion to bring it back on the agenda, and then you would then vote it up or vote it down, or somebody may vote it tabled again.
I'll make a motion to bring it back.
Second.
Question, has the language been adjusted yet?
No, there has not been any change to the ordinance.
So what's the language? That we want it, because it's the first time I'm hearing this time.
I think what Councilman Caprado might be referring to is some of the comments that came forward during the public hearing at the last council meeting, to the effect that the ordinance only relates to single-family dwellings and doesn't apply to multifamily dwellings. It was a comment that was raised during the public comment period by a resident. There was some discussion that took place. There was a recognition that that's the way the prior ordinance had been written. And the ordinance has not been changed from the format that it was in at the last council meeting. So.
What is that going to happen, in July?
Well, there has to be a determination, policy-wise, from the council to decide if you want to do that. So.
If you're not getting feedback from five months and two weeks, what makes you think you're going to?
Well, that's your, if you want to vote it down this evening, it's at your priority.
And it's the same language that John, you voted on twice, Sue, you voted on once. So if there's a problem with the language, it's been there for 10 years. I can live with the language, but I'm no longer that way, so I made a motion to bring it back.
So the motion on the table now is to bring it back?
The way.
The way it's going.
So hold on, I just want to make sure that you understand what you're voting on. Is this a motion to adopt the ordinance, or just to bring it back on the table for further?
The motion is to bring it back.
To bring it back.
And you said we have a new first. Somebody said we have a new first.
Yes. Okay. That's one of our.
Yeah, I believe you need to make a motion to put it back on the agenda, because it's tabled right now. And that motion would need a second. And then the clerk would take a vote to vote it up or vote it down.
Yes, excuse me, I'm not done. If, I don't understand, I thought the purpose of tableing the last time was for the language to be changed. You said there were substantive changes.
Yes, but it was not clear that there was a majority that wanted the ordinance to be revised, at least I didn't feel that it was clear, that there was a majority that wanted the ordinance to be revised to incorporate multifamily. It had not been part of the prior ordinance. If that's the direction that the governing body is giving me, then I will include that for your consideration at the next council meeting.
I thought that's what we were doing.
That's what I would like it to do. I'm sorry that we weren't clear about that. I know that there are council people who just want to get this over with, but I intend to vote for it, of course, so I would like the language changed to include.